So, our next item is a discussion of a proposed text amendment for pawn shops and gem/gold buying businesses as conditional uses. Mr. Frick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will start by saying I have couched my presentation more in terms of providing the City Council with information. I'm not aware of any particular proposed text amendment. I think the first step that to go down that road is to give you an idea of what is out there right now in terms of state regulation and possible local legislation. And then the Council can provide our office with information and suggestions as to what they would like to see included in any proposed text amendment if that's the will of the Council. I've divided it up between presentation on pawn shops and a presentation on precious metals and gems dealers. They are, in many cases, handled in the same ordinance, although sometimes in separate ordinances. Many similarities in how they are treated, but there are separate regulations at the state level, so I've divided them up. And I'm going to begin with the regulation of pawn shops. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to speak from. It may be over-inclusive, and I'm not going to read everything that includes in terms of summarizing some of the local jurisdictions and what they're doing with them, but I provide them for you. I've also provided the full ordinances for the ones that I have cited in your packet. As I indicated, pawn shops are regulated at the state level. I'll go through those first. You'll see that it does provide for local jurisdictions to provide additional legislation and regulation of the pawn shops. At the state level, the state states that all pawn transactions shall be for 30-day periods, but may be extended and continued for additional 30-day periods. That doesn't, there's a distinction between that pawn transaction and what you'll see later is a holding period. This deal specifically, the amount of time that a pawn transaction essentially giving the item as security is for a 30-day period. The state has regulated what are allowable costs on pawn transactions. This shows that they provide interest during each 30-day period. The state says the maximum is 25 percent for each 30-day period during the first 90 days. During the second or anything beyond 90 days, each 30-day period is 12.5 percent. You see that they also have minimum charges for those periods. In addition to the interest for items that involve title transactions, essentially cars, but it does include boats, watercraft, motorcycles, things of that nature, they do allow the pawn broker to charge fees for the cost to register a lien, storage fees, and repossession fees, and it sets maximum amounts for those costs. The state also does prohibit, and I say it doesn't prohibit certain types of costs, it basically prohibits anything that wasn't indicated in the state statute. It also, you'll see that second provision says they have to provide disclosures of what fees they are charging. And there is a very, very detailed, and we'll get to it here, listing eventually, you'll see, on what is provided in the pawn ticket and a disclosure statement. Pawn brokers are required to maintain a permanent record book. It specifically indicates it has to be spelled out in legible English, and it's to be made each loan purchase or sale. The state, you have a list in front of you showing what information the state requires to be included in each record for each transaction. Include the date of the transaction, the name of the person conducting the transaction, that would be the pawn broker or the employee that is accepting the item. Also includes the name, age, and address, and a description of the general appearance of the customer. You'll see that that's one area where there might be some additional information that a lot of jurisdictions have effectively raised the bar in terms of what is required. It also, the state does require a driver's license or similar identification card. Those would, and it actually mentions that it's a photo identification card must be The record has to show an identification and description of the pledged or purchased good, including serial number, model numbers if they're available, and specific identifying marks if there are any. They have to attach and record the receipt or pawn ticket number. They have to record the price paid or the amount loaned. If the pawn broker issues a check for the proceeds, they have to record the number of that check. They have to record the maturity date of the transaction, and it has to include the signature of the customer. Those are the state regulations. In order to make sure that there's no fiddling, I guess we should say, with the record, they're required to appear in ink and in chronological order. No blank lines, no obliterations, alterations, or erasures. And the only way to change an entry is to draw a single line while maintaining the legibility of the entry that was crossed out. And the permanent record book is required by state law to be open to inspection of a duly authorized law enforcement officer. State requires that this record book be maintained for a period of not less than four years. There's also restrictions on advertising indicating what, and to be clear that an item or a transaction is a pawn transaction and that the business is a pawn business. As I mentioned, I'm not going to read through all of these, but there's three pages of items that are required to be disclosed on the pawn tickets. And, you know, there's essentially notices that it's a pawn transaction and that you could lose your item if you don't, you know, comply with the terms of the transaction. You have to list the rate, the fees that are charged, and it goes on. The grace period before they become property. And in addition to those required disclosures, a pawn broker is additionally allowed to include other information. These are, for the most part, items that the broker might want to include for its own benefit, logos, identifying descriptions, hours of operation with the pawn broker, things of that nature. State law then provides that the person that brings the item, the seller or pledger, is to sign the disclosure statement, and they have to maintain a copy of that disclosure statement for two years. That's mostly to protect the person that brings the claim, or protect the pawn broker if there's a challenge from the person that brings the claim saying they didn't realize what the transaction was. That being said, the state did acknowledge that the cities and counties could provide additional regulation of pawn brokers. And that's found at OCJA 4412-136. And there you can see the language that specifically spells out the fact that municipal authorities can license pawn brokers and supervise their actions. One thing, as I mentioned, that the local jurisdictions can't do is change the required disclosures in the pledged ticket, the pawn ticket. Having said that, we tried to conduct somewhat of a survey of what jurisdictions throughout the state, but tried to keep it reasonably close to get examples of what other jurisdictions have done. The first one, and you'll find the actual, the full ordinances in your packet as well. First one is DeCula. And I haven't captured everything that's in each one of these jurisdictions. A lot of them have very similar items. I'll try to highlight distinctions where some jurisdiction may have had good or just a different idea. DeCula, most, almost all jurisdictions require an annual permit. DeCula charges $100 for the application, which is just the cost, which is assigned to the cost of a background investigation. As with many, it sets the pawn broker's license as a prerequisite to obtaining a business license. So these are separate items. You have to have both a business license and a pawn broker's license. They require all the pawn shop employees to have an annual permit card, which there's a fee for obtaining and maintaining. A lot of jurisdictions will repeat a number of the state requirements. There's no problem with doing that, but it also, many of them, many of these things you'll find in the state requirements. For example, they require that the records be maintained for four years. Again, the state statute already requires that. DeCula does require an actual photograph of the customer as opposed to the states require general description. A number of jurisdictions will have that. I think you'll see throughout, both a digital photograph and, in fact, digital fingerprinting requirements are a very common provision. It's added to these local jurisdiction requirements. DeCula requires entry into a computer system, enter each transaction to a computer system. And that's, it's also a common requirement, is that there be a computer, typically it's, I think they call it a computer automated system, automated transaction system, which is maintained by a third-party administrator who then forwards that information, and they may provide in certain types of reports to the city and the city police department more particularly. And those, the city of DeCula requires, assigns a fee for each report and each transaction. That it has been held to be constitutional, you can charge a fee. $1 and $3 per transaction have been approved, not in Georgia, but in other jurisdictions. DeCula requires the property to be held a minimum of 30 days. And as I mentioned, that's different from the state requirement, which talks about a 30-day pawn transaction period. This is, requires that before the pawn broker can get rid of, sell, whatever they may do with an item, they have to hold at least 30 days. And the thought behind that being, that gives a police report time to filter through the process, you know, the crime to get reported, the police to investigate, perhaps to go out and investigate records and see what's out there. There are different periods within the jurisdictions. 30 days is probably the more common one. I think if we go through these, you'll see anywhere from seven to 45 is what I have noticed.
Just to clarify, excuse me, Paul, but these that you brought up are, these are showing these cities have gone above and beyond what the state.
That's correct.
And if you summarized them, there's probably a few points in each one that are consistent.
Yeah, generally, there will, I would say the most common, as you say, over and above, are to get the photograph and digital fingerprints, to include participation in a automated computer system reporting, requiring daily reports to the police department, setting a minimum holding period. As I said, that's ranged from seven, I think, to 45 days. What I've seen, most common, I think, is 15 or 30. Those have been repeated. Seven and 45, I think, were one-time entries that I've found. And also, there was a limitation to note, not allow transaction with minors. Number have limitations on business hours. I know Roswell, which, the next one I looked at, they actually have Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. I didn't take note of the, I know Saturdays was slightly different, and there was no, they were not allowed to transact business on Sundays. Number of jurisdictions have done that. Jurisdictions have another common regulation, is more of a zoning-type regulation, you might say, in requiring minimum distance from other pawn shops or potentially from public parks, churches, schools. There is one that regulates that. I've seen 1,000 feet, 2,500 feet, and 5,000 feet are some of the numbers that I've seen.
Yeah, Paul, is there any jurisdictions that require, you mentioned photographs of the customers themselves, but of the merchandise?
Yes, and I should say that, I kind of equate to, generally, if you have one of the customer, they definitely are requiring one of the merchandise as well.
Okay, alright.
But those are distinct items, and the state requires merely a description of each one of them. And when we get down to drafting, just interestingly, some go so far as say, a, you know, a focused, well-exposed photograph with a full frontal with, you know, clear picture of the face. I mean, they can be pretty detailed about what the picture they want to see.
And on the property, so that it's not on a copy machine, because a lot of them will use a copy machine, and you can't distinguish what it is. It'll be black, and you know that there's something on it, but you can't see it. That detail is important.
And by making them digital, they're required to maintain those records as well.
Let me ask, it's a stupid question, but assuming that we don't have any pawn shops or requests for one, if a pawn shop were to open in the city of Milton, it would just open now under the state's guidelines, correct?
That's correct.
Then if we were to enact any of these, you know, in our ordinance, I guess the person would, or it would be grandfathered in, they wouldn't have to follow these rules?
No.
Or would they have to follow the rules?
Its permit to operate would be grandfathered. However, you could impose rules and regulations on the means and mode of its operation.
Okay, so, you know, if, let's say now we don't, yeah, we don't have anything in the hopper, you know, and may not, and we didn't do anything, but if we did see that we were getting some applications, or, you know, if there were some pawn shops coming to Milton, then we could address it then, too.
Furthering that question, by an annual permit renewal, would that operator have to comply with the latest revisions to the ordinance?
Yes, that if the ordinance were to be changed, all existing or once it come in thereafter. I mean, to the extent that it's merely affecting the operations and how they operate their I don't know that there's too much for me to go through with, go through each jurisdiction. You have the material there. We've got the city of Atlanta, the city of Rome. I will note, you know, the city of Rome distinguished between pledged articles and other articles, essentially whether they're pledged as security or they're actually sold. At times, someone may come in and sell an item, and there's only a seven-day holding period for that. Although it does establish a duty to report suspicious transactions. That was an interesting twist, it wasn't in some of the other ones. I note Johns Creek regulates pawn brokers and secondhand dealers, and you'll find, as we get to talk about in a moment, the precious metals dealers and gems dealers, and they encapsulate those dealers within the secondhand dealers, so they regulate them essentially the same. And you'll find that a lot of the regulations that they'll do is very similar, the same, requiring a record book and requiring that the items be maintained on the property and held for a certain amount of time. They treat them very similarly. Johns Creek, by the way, had the 15-day holding period.
In your opinion, with Johns Creek, just, you know, basically since they're about the same size in New City, you know, how did their ordinance look to you?
I would say that Johns Creek was fairly reasonable. I think you'll see Douglasville and Snellville went very detailed and repeated a lot of information. Roswell assumed the state requirements and didn't repeat them and just added a few things to it. Johns Creek was kind of in between.
I think one of the important things, and I'll just break in, one of the important things is a holding period. 15 days, based on the lack of a central database amongst jurisdictions, does not give the police the time, nor does it give victims, basically, the time to go and really review that information, which is why you start to see more jurisdictions going towards a 45, but many arriving at a 30-day.
And one thing that I haven't, you know, as I've been flipping through here, there's a fairly common, or if not common, at least it's appeared in several jurisdictions, is the kind of a police hold, where the police can come in if they have and can couch, the language has to be more than just a, just kind of random, you've got to hold that, you know, reasonable basis, reasonable evidence presented, to require them to hold it an additional period, separate and apart from the stats or the ordinance required hold. They can commit, say, we have reports of stolen items, this may or may not be it, but, you know, you're required to hold, they can set a particular hold period while they investigate so that the 30-day clock doesn't specifically run and they lose.
And I think the important thing is just that what we're finding, I think, in a lot of the jurisdictions, is that what's been helpful is to have something in place so that those entities that are coming into those communities understand what would be expected should they decide to apply. Obviously, some of these businesses are going to look for those places that don't have something that goes beyond the state law, because the state law is such a minimum requirement, to be quite candid, when you look across the state. I think additionally, and I think, Paul, maybe you were going to mention this, but the other thing, it's one thing to have those records, it's another to proactively send those to the local jurisdiction and the police authorities. I know that we, I believe that we, our police officers, have piloted a third-party electronic database, and increasingly, those are some of the things that are out there whereby a third party would allow for that central database so that whether there was a pawn shop in Alpharetta, or Roswell, or Johns Creek, they would be required to submit to that central database. And then oftentimes, the officers can then have access to that at no cost to the local city. So that just may be something else to consider in terms of proactive reporting.
Yeah, electronic databases is a fairly common provision with the, and most of them will require a daily report filed within 24 hours, whether it's in writing or electronically, to the extent.
Just the reality that the electronic, kind of back to Joe's, Lombrea's point earlier, is that we've got the technology, we need to start utilizing it if we want to protect our citizens. And I think that that's kind of the point of some of this, is to ensure that we're levering those opportunities so that we can reduce time but increase efficiency for our law officers.
You know, we've got a lot of information, but it looked, and based on Congressman Bailey's points and, and ask your opinion, is that probably the most important thing is the hold time, possibly, and then the documentation electronically, and, you know, would that, in your opinion, would that be the most important things?
Importance is a political question.
Exactly, well, I mean, you know.
If we want to reduce crime, I mean, I'll jump to the chase. I mean, if we want to reduce crime and preclude crime, what things help to do that?
Yeah, I know those two. Well, the question I've got, and, you know, based on all these regulations, God only knows why somebody wants to open up a pawn shop, but at what point in time, I mean, do we have ultimate leeway as a municipality to regulate or to add ordinances that regulate this business to our own devices? Or are we limited? At what point do our ordinances become some type of a burden on the business owner and could be called into question in court?
It's called the rational basis test for regulation of commercial activity. So essentially, it has to be a reasonable restriction, reasonably related to a public purpose.
Well, I mean, because...
It's a fairly low standard, but...
I mean, because in essence, you know, we can put together ordinances that would, you know, chase away anybody that wanted to open up a business here in Milton, but I would hate for that to get called into question, and then we bounce back to some state watered-down set of regulations and have the reverse problem.
In essence, if you can, if there's a, if it's logical to conclude that your regulation might impact, you know, benefit the public safety, health and welfare, then you should be okay. No, you can't come up with something that's completely unreasonable and is in no way that you could argue it's unreal, that it would be related to any crime or whatever.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of things that would help, you know, our police and, you know, anybody else, you know, recover items potentially where...
Your authority is not unrestricted, but you have a significant amount of leeway in going down that road.
Do you know if any of these other jurisdictions' ordinances have been changed in that respect?
None that have been, made it to a reported case. Gwinnett County had a case that went to the 11th Circuit, and it was upheld. It was, it wasn't directly a challenge to, I think, any of the particular issues that we've had discussed here, but upheld.
I would think, too, if we decided, if we wanted to add, you know, or have an ordinance, that we'd probably go to, as you've done with your research, several other, you know, jurisdictions and make sure that we're not out of line, you know, we're kind of in the, not way out of line one way or the other on it.
And I think that that's actually part of what you've got in this packet. Mayor Cherokee County is an example, just recently redid an ordinance, and Roswell's got one, Johns Creek has one. And really, to kind of jump to the chase, the things that appear when you look across those jurisdictions that are pretty important, it's having digital photography of those that are bringing in items, it's having digital photography of the items themselves, to your point, in a detailed way that allows them to actually be viewed, centrally providing that data electronically, having digital fingerprints that not only get held at that site, but ultimately get submitted to the officers, because the data's only valuable if it's accessible by our investigators. The other would be from a zoning category, making sure that that's clear. And I know that Lynn had identified at least the pawn shops as a C2 in the last. Some questions I know that I've heard from citizens are just like some that we have prohibited. You can either prohibit certain businesses and/or make sure that they're at least in the appropriate zoning. As Mr. Frick has noted, many of the jurisdictions will say that you can only have these types of businesses every so many feet, so that as an example, you wouldn't have one every 10 or 20 feet, because that does tend to happen. They tend to locate in a particular area that, if you look at criminal activity, tends to spawn itself. Not always, but in some cases. And again, this is really tied to public safety, health, and welfare, not at all to limit business, but to ensure that we're protecting our citizens and protecting the businesses that are indeed providing a legitimate service as opposed to those that may be tied to some criminal activity.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know there was some discussion at, I don't know if it was the last work session, but I know there was some discussion when we talked about prohibited uses in all zoning categories, fortune tellers, massage parlors, et cetera, that we prohibited, basically, that can't be in the city. So I'm confused as to the discussion regarding regulation of pawn shops, if we can completely prohibit other uses. You know, it would, if you can completely prohibit pawn shops, I don't really know what the legal argument would be, one way or the other, in putting arduous regulations on them to, you know, to limit their activity.
In order to prohibit a business, you need to establish that prohibition is a reasonable means of protecting the public interest. And I wasn't able to find anywhere where they attempted to prohibit pawn brokers, and it was either upheld or withdrawn, or overturned. And the key being establishing, there's a pretty strong argument that's made that you can regulate them enough so that you don't, you have to weigh into the equation to some extent, the right of the individual to conduct a business. And there's language which suggests, you know, the pawn business is a legitimate business, and that the courts aren't, you know, anxious to completely remove the pawn business. And they've accepted regulation as long as it's tied rationally related to legitimate gun... regulation as long as it's tied rationally related to legitimate government purpose, such that it doesn't overburden the business itself. And that's how they've looked at it.
Well, I personally don't find pawn shops desirable in any shape, form, or fashion. However, especially given that if there were a pawn shop to be in Milton, it would be in District Six, right along Highway Nine. And I agree, they usually occur in clusters. And so if we were to put regulations on this, I would certainly want us to consider certain distance requirements between the pawn shops and as well as the other restrictions that have been talked about, namely, the photographs be taken of customers and the merchandise, digital photographs where they could be well-focused and the merchandise would be held for a certain amount of time. But more importantly, I think before we can make any recommendations either to have more stringent requirements or to even consider limiting them altogether, I think staff needs to provide us with a report of the correlation between pawn shops and crime, property crime. And I, you know, just sitting here on my smartphone, I've pulled up, you know, correlations and a lot of studies come up on both sides. And I would like staff's recommendation on that.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. There's a lot of information here. And, you know, if we would like to move forward, I'm assuming we might want some more, as Councilmember Tarch said, some more information from staff, and also have time to digest some of this information and get some feedback from council. But I guess the first question would be, is, you know, is the council, is it a pleasure of the council to move forward or start addressing, you know, an ordinance, number two, you know, timing? Is it, you know, like, I don't believe Lynn's here and could, I don't believe we have any, there's no applications or any rumors of anything, but so, you know, I guess we've got a little bit of time, but.
Which is good.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, you know, I guess I'll start there. Does the council like to move forward?
I'll give you a resounding guess that I think that we need to be proactive and get something in place.
Bill?
I think we need to adopt the state ordinance. And what I'd like to see, maybe a little more staff kind of come up with a spreadsheet, at least these, what, six or seven representative cities, come up with a consensus, boil this list down to three or four additional items we need to incorporate with the state ordinance. I guess part of staff research has the police chief looked at this proposed.
I didn't understand you.
Oh, there you go.
He's taking notes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would have to, you know, agree if we want to look at, you know, some of these other ones, but also it sounds like, in my opinion, the key items that have been brought up are, would be the important ones in my mind, is a holding period and the bail duty of tracking and documenting.
There's a lot of commonality amongst all of these, and I think you can boil it down.
That's, I'd say the same, same type of thing, is to make sure we're following the state stuff, which I'm sure we would, but not have a forty-seven page ordinance, but some stuff that we might get hit in five or six bullet points.
Yeah, I think that the business license, you know, gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of how we adapt to behaviors of businesses that don't actually exist right now in Milton. So, so, I mean, we've got a couple of things working for us. I hate to lump all pawn shops into, you know, some type of quasi-legitimate business, because I don't think that's fair. I think that there are, you know, plenty of business models out there where, you know, the pawn shop is, plays an important role. And so I'm interested in making sure that we at least adopt, you know, some modifications to whatever the state ordinance is to protect, you know, Milton.
And I'd have to agree. I'm, you know, I can say, just like Councilmember Tarch, you know, I personally may not want pawn shops here, but there is a, you know, it is a business model and there are people that use them. And so there's a need out there. But to Joe's point, maybe we can do this on, you know, come up with an ordinance with some important, just a few important regulations that don't, it's not, we're not painting a bad picture of the business as a whole, but it's just these are, you know, important things that if we ever do have a business like that, that we can have in there. But I'm going to assume, Councilmember Tarch, you're on board with that. So, will the next step be to maybe have staff, as I think Bill said, kind of look through and cull through some important things, plus the items we talked about? Also, Alan brought up a good point about, you know, maybe give us some statistics, if you can find some statistics that would back this up.
And I'll just let you know, as a little bit of advanced lead, I know that the DA's office in Fulton County has done quite a bit of research on crime and the crime in North Fulton being most directly tied to property. And there's been a lot of research done by the DA's office as it relates to pawn shops and that correlation with crime. And one of the things that the DA's office is working on is moving towards some central database structure. So that may give staff and our officers who probably have been in touch with those guys, some additional help. And I'd just like to make a quick point, is that I think that these regulations are not intended to prevent business at all. It's intended to protect our citizens, and it's intended to be proactive and to ensure that we have the regulations in place that are necessary to ensure that the appropriate businesses are operating as they should. And the state law is extremely minimal in terms of how these are operated, which is why when you look across the state, the majority of jurisdictions have adopted a lot of these other components that just simply ensure that we're protecting the public safety, welfare and health.
Okay.
Can I kind of just summarize this?
Yeah, summarize.
If I captured it right. We'll look at putting something together. The points that I have captured that I think were consistent amongst you all as far as where there might be some interest in further regulation. Deals with good quality photographs of both the items and the person that are bringing items in. Maybe look at a fingerprinting requirement, addressing a hold period, moving towards or endorsing some type of a digital database, I'm going to get back to that in a second. And then distance requirements. It's kind of, those were kind of the key ones that I've heard. Did you mention a hold period?
Hold period, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's good to hear, and I am well aware that the DA's office is looking at how to maybe attack some of this on a bigger basis than just Milton.
Right.
Let me just remind you all that we can put a very good ordinance in place, and we can enforce that ordinance if we ever have to, which today we don't have to. But the success in regulating these types of activities are going to occur if somebody who has the power and ability to do something on a larger basis than just an individual city actually takes the lead and runs with that, because we're responsible for these thirty-eight square miles that today don't have any pawn shops in them. And let's just say we got one and we regulated it very well, that still regulates our little piece of the world. And, gosh, I've been in, with some type of law enforcement roots now for more than a decade, working on a decade and a half. And this is one of those areas that the information flow amongst the people that are actually out there trying to do the investigation and look for the stuff is not good. We have a hard enough time passing along lookouts back and forth to each other of people who have killed people, let alone people who have stolen stuff from others. And the quantity of papers, I mean, there were days you could go into the roll call room and put a shift on the street and have a document this big of things just to pass along to people and say, gosh, today while you're out there, if you happen to come across a Bose radio, it might be stolen, if you happen to come across a, you know, and you could literally read and read and read. We've got to get better on passing information amongst ourselves in the region. So it's great to hear that somebody has, like the district attorney who has the whole county, that's the right person to drive something like that, because they can do something on a level that brings everybody together. If we put a real great ordinance in place and we say, gosh, will you cooperate with us and you cooperate with us, that's as good as them saying yes.
I think the great news about that, Chris, is that it does start to say, okay, we're prepared and we're ready. And gee, we'd like to see that happening in Cherokee. And to the point earlier, is that Cherokee County, as an example, has put in a more stringent, I say stringent, but they've put in more appropriate regulations because they started to have issues with this industry. And so hopefully, when we look at and when staff looks and compares, they'll look at Cherokee County as well as these others.
To your point, yeah. In fact, as we said, we looked through a lot of our local sister cities and in the area, which, you know, hopefully, if we are all kind of close, that will be reachably versus, you know.
I think it's great to regulate to the extent that we can. I mean, and to the extent that the state gives us the authority to, we should be prepared. So I say all that to say that's a good thing.
Okay.
And.
And can I just, can I just mention that one of the things that we didn't get to talk about, but that there are some commentaries that talk about that when police reports are sent to these organizations, that there's a way to capture the language that says that when that information gets to them, that they have the responsibility of reading that data so that effectively they are in receipt of those emails. So if Chief Harrell sends or if our police officers or Cherokee or somebody sends information to a particular pawn shop, is that the ordinance would state that they are indeed in receipt of that. I don't know if that makes sense, but effectively to say that it is presumed to be received when a police officer or someone representing that jurisdiction sends that entity information, i.e. a police report.
Okay, I'm sure we can capture that.
And it's just standard language, but it's, tonight's the night, it sounds like, to at least highlight those sorts of things that are important. And I'm going to make one other point. Other than having police officers have the authority, some of the, there was one out of Athens that said law enforcement officer or designated civilian employee. So as an example, if you have a smaller police force, that way you don't have to have detectives that are out necessarily reviewing this, but you could have a designated civilian employee that a jurisdiction would have in place. And that seemed to be an important phrase, so it didn't have to necessarily take a police officer to be able to do some of that activity.
I know what that means in Athens. It means something different over there.
It seems to have some applicability from a cost perspective.
I'm not sure what that means.
That you could have somebody other.
In Athens, what it means is they would allow their evidence technician to be able to do it, for example, or somebody else internal within the organization that just doesn't hold the rank of being sworn. And I can picture the person in Athens who probably does that. Of course, you know, they might be so big now that they have somebody that just does nothing but manages relationships with pawn shops. I mean.
Do we have such a person on staff here in the city?
We've got J.C.
Yeah, we don't have any.
No, it's not that we have anybody now. It's to say that at some point, that way you wouldn't have to be a police officer that you're taking off the street to go do some of that. It just, it gives the authority, should, in the case.
There might be some records.
Right.
Do you think that's reasonable?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have any problems. The more people we can get authority to, the.
Okay. I think we're, you know, we've kind of got a consensus here, and you guys have some stuff to work with, and we look forward to it.
Mr. Mayor, I also had a presentation on gems, precious dealers and gem dealers, precious metal dealers and gem dealers. I can't provide you with that. I have provided you now, I believe, with the presentation materials, which summarizes both the state legislation and, again, a number of the examples of what's being done in other jurisdictions. I can go through that summary here again tonight. It's very similar, and I think if the council comes to some recommendations, many jurisdictions will provide the regulation within the same set of ordinance. If you want to go down that way, I don't know that there's a lot of benefit to me going through all this. I'm more than happy to. In essence, it's the same type of situation where the state provides some minimum guidelines, it defines a dealer. And one of the key things in this is to make sure that you capture those dealers who are performing what is essentially or usually, you know, pawn type of business as opposed to a regular second-hand jewelry dealer seller. And there's some language and there's a state definition which most jurisdictions simply copy, and it basically defines it based on who they're buying from. And there are minor distinctions between the various jurisdictions, but again, they require reports. Most jurisdictions will require the same photographs and electronic reporting. I can leave that.
I would think that that, you know, probably, whatever actions we take on one would be similar to the other. So, you know, it's fine with me if you don't go through the whole presentation and, you know.
The information is there, and I'd be happy to answer any individual questions you may have.
As we go forward, obviously, that'll be something we'll address along.
Certainly.
Okay. The city clerk, please tell the next item.
The next item is discussion of intersection improvements at the Hopewell-Francis-Cogburn intersection. Mr. Carter-Lucas.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Now, this is a project update for the Hopewell-Francis-Cogburn intersection. It's a project that we began back in January of this year. And to date, we have completed our concept analysis and surveys of the intersection. Back on April 28th, we also held a public information meeting, which was very well-attended. We received a little over forty comments at that particular meeting. And then we also held the comment period open through this entire process. So we've received, I think, pretty close to ninety comments so far on the proposed intersection improvements. When we started looking at this intersection, one of the things that really kind of surprised us was the distribution of the traffic. On a general average day of traffic, we expected to see quite a heavy northbound, southbound movement on the Cogburn-Hopewell legs. And it was really distributed a little bit more evenly than we expected. We had about thirty-one percent on the northbound, southbound legs, but we had twenty percent on the Francis westbound leg and eighteen percent on the Hopewell leg. So we received a lot more traffic on that east-west connection than we were really anticipating. We start breaking those down to morning and afternoon peaks, just to kind of look at the actual movements through the intersection. The morning peak, obviously, is that southbound-Hopewell movement. We had twenty-nine percent of the traffic coming straight through the intersection there, ten percent turning right onto Hopewell, and only one percent turning left. You had another heavy movement on that westbound-Francis movement. Eighteen percent of the traffic was headed westbound across the intersection from Francis to Hopewell, and thirteen percent of that was turning left onto Cogburn. So pretty even distribution around, much more than what we expected. And in the afternoon, you really kind of see the reverse of that. You see that heavy movement, the thirty-one percent through the intersection coming from northbound, coming up Cogburn northbound, and then back eastbound on the Hopewell leg. So it's seventeen percent of the traffic coming eastbound through the intersection, and thirteen percent of that traffic then turning left on up Hopewell. So in our concept design analysis, what we looked at were two different alternatives. We looked at the traditional traffic signal with turn lanes associated with that. And then in accordance with the transportation master plan that identified this as a potential roundabout location, we also reviewed the single lane roundabout here at this location. And that's what we presented at the public information meeting back in April. You know, you'd really like for this to kind of jump out and one to be heads and tails above the other. And I guess you can use that five percent as your fluff to sway it one way or the other, signal versus roundabout.
It's overwhelmingly roundabout. That's obvious.
But out of the ninety-seven comments we received, it was pretty well right down the middle. You know, a lot of the comments were, they just wanted something done fairly quickly. And to address congestion during peak hours, and I think really either of these alternatives does that. We had some comments about driver confusion with the roundabout, and there certainly is a learning curve. As these become more prevalent in the area, I think people will begin to get more used to them. I think anytime you've had these proposed, where there may have been pretty vocal opponents at the outset, once the roundabouts are constructed, that pretty much dies away. Sarah and I were talking about this earlier, and there's probably only one roundabout we could think of that even after construction. There have been some negative comments, one down in Clearwater, Florida, but the issues with that are not what we have here. And I wouldn't anticipate to have any of the problems that we have down there. So if you were to look at the intersection, we did a layout of the two alternatives. This is the traditional traffic signal. Left turn lanes and right turn lanes were warranted. The red lines on the graphic there show the proposed right-of-way, the required right-of-way for this particular alternative. And the roundabout. So if you overlay those two, you can see it's pretty even, and this is what you would generally expect when you do the comparison between the signalized intersection versus the roundabout. Right at the intersection, the roundabout will typically require a little bit more right-of-way away from the intersection because of the turn lanes and the tapers required for the traffic signal. The traffic signal requires a little bit more right-of-way. When you start laying it out, in either case, we've got six parcels that would be affected by right-of-way acquisition on this particular project. Where we start to see the difference is in the construction costs. Now, the construction costs that are presented here, the $800,000 versus the $600,000, the difference really represents the construction of the signal equipment itself. And so as we've talked before, that signal equipment can run anywhere from $100,000 to $250,000, just depending on the type of signal that we're looking at. What this does not include, and we'll skew that a little bit too, are right-of-way acquisition costs. And so you can see from this graphic that the signal requires about twice as much right-of-way as the roundabout. And so those cost estimate numbers would vary a little bit more in favor of the roundabout at that point. And then the maintenance per year. With the signalized intersection, we've got annual inspections that we do on the signal equipment. We've got power required for the signal, and we have the potential for problems, both during storms and just during everyday activities. I mean, we've, you look at a controller, a controller goes out on a signal, that's an easy $4,000 right there. We've had several of those go out this year.
So, Carter, are you saying the 800 versus 600, that's inclusive of purchase of land?
It does not include right-of-way.
Okay.
So the right-of-way costs, you can see that it's about twice the right-of-way required for the signal as it is for the roundabout. So that would skew the dollars in favor of.
That's amazing.
In favor of the roundabout.
Why is that? I would think it'd be the.
Yeah, I'm sitting here trying to figure that out.
Well, when you start looking at it, what happens with the signalized intersection is you've got to provide additional turn lanes and tapers to get to those turn lanes and around those turn lanes. And so your right-of-way acquisition is generally very long and far away from the intersection, whereas with the roundabout, it's really localized right there at the intersection itself.
Plus with the sig, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see the biggest challenge there is dealing with the AT&amp;T switches.
Absolutely.
So who would pick up the cost of relocating or?
Right now, we think with either alternative, we can avoid those impacts. That would be one of the utilities that we have that, and we're looking at that right now, but it may be that the, we would have to bear the cost of any utility relocation for that particular bank. But I think we've been looking at that, and we think that we can avoid that with either alternative.
That's a plus.
And with the cost comparison, the DOT would pay for the roundabout, but we would have to pay solely for the signal, correct?
This would be an off system. In other words, this is not part of the DOT system, so this would be a locally funded project.
We'd pay for all of them.
Bummer.
How about that one house that's in the picture there? It looks like that proposed right-of-way comes maybe even across the tip of their turnaround portion of their driveway.
Where do you see that, where?
Up in the top, right there.
Should actually be the northeast corner.
Right.
Well, in this particular drawing, it, the trail is shown on that particular side of the property, as it is in the trail master plan. What we've looked at, let's see if I can go back to, what we've looked at as possibly a better alternative is pulling the trail to the south side of the road and be able to minimize some of those impacts.
Is the, is this picture here, is the dash line that's right above the red line or is that the current right-of-way?
That's correct.
So it's not as much of an impact, looking at current versus proposed?
True, yeah.
And that's right-of-way, that's not edge of pavement?
That's correct. So one of the things that will happen as we get into final design on this, some of those right-of-way acquisitions that are shown now may change to easements as we begin to look at the grading plans and how that lays out.
And Carter, is it correct that the roundabout has a lesser impact on that home since of the four corners, that's the one full-time resident that's there?
Slightly, I think.
I mean, slightly, I mean, I know that there's a.
Keeps traffic moving better.
I mean, there's a little bit more right-of-way acquisition with the traffic signal, but as far as the edge of pavement on that particular corner, it's pretty close.
Similar.
Did that citizen voice an opinion on what they wanted?
Did we get one from them?
No.
We did not get one from them.
Too bad.
What do the yellow lines represent? Is that the trail and the trail crossing?
The trail, the yellow lines are the trail, yes, sir.
I want to say, I drove a roundabout today over in Roswell, and I was like, wow, this is working so well over on Grimes Bridge.
Sarah drives that one every day.
And I know there had been a lot of debate, and my understanding from folks that live over there is that now they really do receive it well, they have learned to utilize it. And today being an example, I mean, traffic was flowing well, and, you know, it was.
Did anyone see European vacations?
Big man part of it.
I have to admit, when we go into St. Simon's, they've got one down there, and every time we have somebody new following us, I pull them to the roundabout, and I go around as many times as I can before they finally pull off. They're trying to follow me.
Where's Joe Locke?
A couple weeks ago, when we were on vacation, we had some friends follow us, and apparently she'd been driving all day, wasn't in a good mood, and my little boy said, Dad, we've got to do it. And so we're driving around for about two times, and he's waving out the sunroof and making fun of him, and I saw her just dart off and go the other way. And I knew when I followed him, and the dad was getting out and saying, okay, I'm going to drive, and she was not mad. Sorry about that.
Well, I had the opportunity to go on vacation this year to Sedona and that whole town, like some other towns that we've mentioned in here. The whole town's based on roundabouts. West Sedona and Sedona, I don't know if you've ever been there, and it was refreshing how quickly traffic got from one point to the next. And you could, we were pretty far from where we needed to be, and, I mean, we could just go back and forth really quick. It takes getting used to, but.
I bet Georgians can learn how to use.
I'm not a fan of them. I just want to put that on the record. They may be the best thing in the world, but I'm not a fan of them.
Well, they do take a little getting used to.
I do.
We'll sponsor some roundabout driving classes.
Can we call it a traffic circle?
And, and Carter, I know you said that a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but I have wondered if we could and would hope that we could proactively, because we're obviously going to have a roundabout at Birmingham and Providence, we've talked about it potentially in Crab Apple, we're talking about it here potentially. I think that a lot of times, it is people's just concern over can I drive in a roundabout because they don't have the experience. I mean, couldn't you on a Saturday, obviously with our officers' help, you know, have an, or maybe it's a Sunday, a day that you don't have as much traffic, and give people that opportunity to use it and.
It's like NASCAR.
Always turn right.
Yeah. Look to your left and go to the right.
So where do we go from here?
Round.
Circles.
I'm glad you asked that question.
Circle back to.
I laid that up for you, didn't I?
Well, when we looked at the comparison, obviously, from a capacity standpoint, they're very comparable. Comparable on the project footprint, construction schedule. Traffic signal is going to be more familiar, and that's really what we heard for those people that were in favor of the traffic signal, that, you know, they just, they weren't happy with the roundabout because they really didn't know how they worked and didn't think they would work in this particular location. The roundabout has a lower lifecycle costs, lower speeds, and we've talked about potentials for traffic calming on all of these roads. This is an alternative that accomplishes that to some degree, and reduced delays. We talked about the safety of the intersection. When you look at the traditional intersection, the signalized intersection versus a roundabout, what this shows is there are 32 potential points of conflict in a signalized intersection, 32 points where you could have an accident. That's reduced to eight in a single-lane roundabout. The eight conflict points, when there is an accident, tend to be far low, far lower speeds, far less impact at the accidents. So from a safety standpoint, it's a much safer alternative.
It's compelling in itself.
It is. And so when we looked at it, all things being equal, and in this case, not quite equal because the costs are lower for the roundabout, and the safety impact is much greater for the roundabout, our recommendation is to go ahead and move forward with the design of the roundabout at this particular location. When we look at schedule, about five months to complete final plans. Part of that would be the right-of-way plans. Acquisition, we have put in here 12 months, can go faster, can go slower. 12 months is probably a pretty good estimate on acquisition of right-of-way, and then another 12 months for construction.
Nothing happens quick, does it?
No, it doesn't.
You would think it would take a year to construct it.
I think we can move faster than that.
Okay, maybe six weeks.
Say six off-acquisition, six off-construction, and then we'll be talking.
Usually, the construction time period gets drawn out with utility relocations, and as long as we can avoid any significant utility locations, construction can usually move a little bit quicker than that.
State Bridge Road and 141.
So unless there's any significant objections, we'd be moving forward with the design for the roundabout at this particular location.
Do I hear any objections? Hearing none.
Do it.
You might want to move forward.
And I have one bullet point to add that said cost, obviously, reduce cost, better safety would also be its character building for our community, and it's consistent with what our vision is for the citizens, what the citizens' vision is.
We did hear that in a number of comments, positive comments.
So that would be a nice bullet point.
Carter, are you familiar with TED? The technology, I forget what the acronym stands for, but it's a conference that they have on a regular basis. There's a guy made a presentation at roundabouts, saving an unbelievable amount of fuel for people that are stopped at intersections.
I have seen that. I've seen that related to stop signs, but the same thing holds true for this.
Carter, could you give that, that slide where you had the points of impact? And what did you say for traditional? It was how many?
32.
32.
32 versus eight.
Versus eight.
Like almost a quarter.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good stuff.
Good deal. Please, if you want to.
Next item is discussion of the Mayfield-Mid-Broadwell project. Mr. Carter Lucas.
All right, this is another project that we began back in January. This was the development of intersection improvements in the Crab Apple area, particularly at the 372-Broadwell-Mayfield intersection. That's the way the project originally began. It changed a little bit as we developed the Lou Oliver study for the whole Crab Apple area. And what we wanted to do with that was to include those transportation components outlined in the study in this intersection evaluation, so that we could determine whether or not those transportation improvements had any impact, positive or negative, on the intersection right there at the gas station itself. So as we've worked our way through this project, this one moves a little bit differently because this is one of our HPP, or federally-funded, projects. So we're following that, those guidelines and development of this project. We've looked at, from a 40,000-foot level, the environmental screening. And what we wanted to do with that was to look at a historical and environmental standpoint, those issues that might come up when we started looking at all the transportation improvements that might impact the selection of one of the alternatives over another. We've done some traffic analysis down in that particular area. We've begun our concept team meetings with GDOT, and we've developed some priorities that we'll go over tonight. So when we looked at the evaluation of the improvements that came out of Lou Oliver's study, we wanted to look at those projects that provided some sort of connectivity or mobility or sense of community, those that actually had some impact on alleviating congestion right at the intersection, affordability for these projects, and also constructibility from an environmental and historical standpoint. So if you went back and you just said, let's do a traditional intersection here, we'll do all the turn lanes that we need, here's the impact that we would have. The blue line would show the back of curb, location of back of curb in this particular case. So from that, you would then move out with any beauty strips, any sidewalks, any streetlighting, any streetscape improvements, and you can see the impact that it has. You've got the two buildings on the east side of the intersection that would be impacted to a point that we'd probably have a taking on those two buildings. A full-blown intersection like this doesn't help any with pedestrian mobility, and really probably doesn't suit the character of the Crab Apple area. And so rather than move forward just straight with this, with blinders on, we started to look at alternatives both at the intersection and through the Lou Oliver study that would be some alternatives to this particular type of intersection. So we looked at seven of the bypass scenarios that Lou had laid out, and we'll see that on a map here in just a second, as well as 11 intersections around those scenarios, and how both the intersections would function on those legs. So these are the intersections or the legs that we looked at. I think just by coincidence, they're probably ranked in their order of priority, but that wasn't the intent when we originally looked at it. And so you can see the intersection at the gas station right there in the middle, the Mayfield-Broadwell-Crab Apple intersection. The number-one leg was that northwest bypass, the number-two leg, the extension of Charlotte, and they, those would both tie in over at the location of the existing Wieland entrance. And then the third alternatives that he had out there were some bypasses around the southeast side, connections with Charlotte, and connections, it's really kind of an extension of the Marshtrau Drive over to Mid-Broadwell, and then continuing that on at some point over to Charlotte. And then we had some connections, the four, five, and six that are shown on the map, up to School Drive, and some connections to Mayfield. And really, as we started to lay those out, the number-one happens to be what's listed on here, the northwest bypass. What we tried to do, this shows you some of the alternatives that we looked at, and so in this particular table, if we started at the top, the number-one intersection, and it's not priority number one, it's just numerically number one, that intersection is the one right there at the John Wieland entrance. And so you can see with a stop-controlled intersection, and then with the various alternatives. So if you looked at the first one, would be that if you included the northwest bypass, so if we built that number-one intersection, I'm not going to go through the entire table, I was just going to give you an idea about what we were looking at.
That's obvious.
Well, let me just go with this, then. You don't want to see red on the table.
There you go. I had a feeling that was going to be the case.
So the reds would be bad. And so with that northwest bypass with stop-controlled, you can see the north-south movements on 372, regardless of whether or not you add any of the other scenarios, the one through six scenarios, operates fine. It's the east-west movement, or if you don't do the Charlotte extension, really just that east movement coming out of Wieland, on a stop sign like it is now, operates at an F. It's just a bad intersection. So then what we started to do is to look at the intersection improvements both there and at the west side of Crab Apple, where the number-one leg, the northwest bypass, ties back into 372. And at that particular location, Lou had in the visioning plan a roundabout shown. To make this work, we've also included a roundabout at the other end of that to improve that east-west connectivity and that tie-in to 372 right there at the Wieland entrance.
So both of those locations would be a roundabout. Am I thinking about that correctly?
And so you're really starting to bracket kind of the Crab Apple pedestrian area with the roundabouts to help control traffic and slow things down as they enter what would be kind of considered the heart of that Crab Apple area. So we've got a number of alternatives that we looked at out there. And what we've started to nail it down to is some specific projects right at the intersection itself, as well as looking at some of those bypass areas. One of the things that we were concerned about was being able to fit some of these improvements in that existing intersection, particularly with the buildings on the east improvements in that existing intersection, particularly with the buildings on the east side. What we've been able to do, and what we think we'll be able to do, is to develop left-turn lanes on all legs of the intersection with the exception of that westbound movement on And so what we started to find is, and if you look at this drawing, the blue line is the back of curb, and so we would be relocating that back of curb, we're getting pretty close to that existing building, that brick building on the southeast corner, but at this point, it looks like we would be able to fit that in. And that would allow us to do a left-turn movement on the eastbound traffic so that they could turn leftbound onto north, three, going north on 372. What we've seen is that even though that's not a big heavy movement that direction, one or two vehicles there held up can just kill that entire queue coming back. And so the ability to get those out of that queue and allow that through movement to continue will have a significant impact on the level of service with the intersection. And so when we start looking at the dollars and where we can fund these particular projects, we currently have about $1.5 million allocated to this in our HPP funding. We've talked about an unallocated share that's out there in the past, and that's about one point, another $1.2 million that is available in our unallocated HPP funds to be used on this project. And then it's an 80/20 split, so our 20% match, we'd have a local match of about 706,000 for our local match, giving us available funds of almost three and a half, a little over three and a half million dollars. Right now, in our conceptual estimates, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about $500,000 for the intersection improvements, the construction of the left-turn lanes, and somewhere around $2 to $2.5 million for the northwest bypass. So under this existing funding, we would like to move forward with our concept plans in developing both improvements at the intersection and evaluation of that northwest bypass. I think we're at a point, if we're ever going to be able to do that northwest bypass, now's the time to do it. I think the properties are there before they get significantly more developed, and that gives us an ability to at least discuss this, these projects with those property owners.
And those costs, do you calculate that we, any purchase of property?
Those do not include right-of-way acquisition. One of the things with that northwest bypass, the way it's laid out, it currently, a lot of that is already in dedicated right-of-way. What we would have to do is look at whether or not, and this would go back to dealing with the property owners, whether or not that configuration is ideally suited for them or not, and whether or not what's been constructed there already would support the additional traffic that would probably use that bypass. So particularly on that leg, I think the cost estimates are very preliminary, and we'd have to do some more work to not nail those down, but I would say at this point at least gives us a ballpark figure that we are close on the available funding, and it would be an alternative that I would recommend pursuing to that extent.
Any comments?
Just a quick question, make sure I understand the funding you proposed. One, it's very helpful to have it broken down this way. So the 3.5, that includes the northwest connector that goes through the Whelan property to Crab Apple. It also includes the proposed left turn signal, or left lanes that would allow you to go from Crab Apple north on Birmingham Highway, includes both of those, including the roundabout at Crab Apple and the roundabout at Birmingham Highway?
Yes, ma'am. They would have to be constructed with that in order to make it operational functioning.
Okay, so it would be both roundabouts as well as the turn lanes and any other subsequent movements. Were there other turn lanes, or just the left-turn lane that would go take you north on Birmingham Highway?
Under our plan right now, there would be left turns on all legs, except for the Mayfield leg.
Okay.
We just don't have enough room between those two buildings to make that happen.
And the only component that's not here yet is that right-of-way, but that may be mitigated by the fact that you've got existing...
That's right. And until we really know what it is and do the appraisals, it's a little bit difficult to put a number on that right-of-way acquisition.
Can you just speak really quickly about timing? And I know that it's tough to estimate, but if you were to start to, there you go, if you were to start to proceed. It's a great segue, I knew you had it.
One of the things that we want to look at is environmental issues. If you look at, you know, the base environmental document that we put together if we thought that there were no significant impacts, the categorical exclusion is about a one-year timeframe. The next level would be two years, the next level would be three years. And so particularly with the Charlotte extension, there's a ranch house right at the, on the north side of that intersection. That's a historical structure under their guidelines, and so any impacts to that structure really kicks you off into this three-year timeframe. So that has an impact on the schedule. The good thing about the northwest bypass is most of that land has already been developed, so we're anticipating that environmental documentation on that would be relatively short. What we are talking about doing, though, is including an environmental study for the number-two alternative or the Charlotte extension, so that can be going on concurrently with our other work, so that hopefully when we complete the northwest bypass, we would be in a position to move forward with the Charlotte extension, which would be the number-two priority, without having another significant delay for environmental documentation on that.
And did that 3.5 include that second environmental assessment for that number-two?
It can. You know, the 3.5 is available funding, it's, we have not gotten to the point where we break it down into that level of detail yet.
I didn't know how expensive the actual environmental impact studies are. I know that they're not inexpensive.
Carrie, do you have any idea what an environmental, Carrie Ward Westantek is here, Erwin Lopez, our engineers are here that have helped to put all this together.
Josh, do we...
Okay, while she gets that, we can talk the schedule a little bit.
Doing an environmental impact study, would you include the number-four and number-five leg in there too? What's the...
Well, initially, I don't think I was going to do that.
What do you think the incremental additional cost would be? Seems like it's a pretty small area to begin with, just the...
You're probably right. I think it would depend on, I'd have to go back and look at our overall environmental assessment to see what, or if they found any historical structures or properties in that particular area. Do you remember off the top of your head on those legs? I mean, it may be relatively minor. Really, I mean, what we probably could do is look at that document and include, if we included all of these, that certainly could be part of our evaluation. I think we would have bigger impacts down on those priority-three now here. I should probably have the... So yeah, as Sarah just mentioned, the environmental studies, if we decided that we could fund any of these locally, that environmental documentation would be greatly reduced, if not eliminated. So what I was saying is that, you know, it's a potential that we could involve all six of those in the environmental documentation. I think what we would want to be careful of is just not, it would really be two, I guess, you'd have one specifically for the northwest bypass, and then another one running concurrently that would cover the others so that we don't run into any problems and delay on the number-one project.
Carter, could you go back to that one that you had?
Yep, this one?
Yeah. Because of the, because we can't do a left-hand turn onto Mayfield because of the property that would be affected there, would it be a lot more money to shift that whole intersection more towards the northwest, to take it away from the east? Yeah, more towards the gas station? Thinking of more impact to one particular property, but less impact to others, and if we shift the intersection to accommodate what we need to accommodate?
I think for the distance that you would have to shift that, and we've looked at a couple of alternatives in there to try and accommodate that, you would probably have significant impacts on both the north and south side of that intersection. One of the alternatives that we've looked at, or we will be looking at from an operational standpoint, is really the elimination of the left-hand turn at that particular location. So the left-hand turners would actually go through the intersection. There's a left-hand turn lane already constructed that goes down, it comes out Marstrow, comes down on the other side of the Alpharetta Government Facility. So for the numbers of people that turn left there, which is really relatively small, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 in the peak hour, it might be a viable alternative just during the peak hour to eliminate that left-hand turn at the intersection altogether. And we'll be looking at that from a functional standpoint as we move forward with the design.
You see that a lot in Atlanta, like on Peach Street and stuff, where you can't turn during peak hours.
Right. So from a schedule standpoint, again, dealing with the federal dollars, it's a pretty strict schedule that we have to stay by, and so moving forward from now through the construction period is roughly four years. What we have tried to do is target a few of these projects that we could move either quicker with through this process, or fund them locally and be able to have some impact on a much quicker timeframe than what the schedule would permit. So with that, if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a quick thought, is that as you are evaluating where during peak times that you might not have a left turn, I know in the past we've talked about if you're headed south on Birmingham Highway, perhaps eliminating the left turn there during certain times and/or if you had an arrow, that you had a longer arrow at certain times, because that's also very similar to this one where you've got folks that are headed east that want to go north, you have a somewhat limited number, but all it takes is one vehicle and it backs everything up. So I just, that may already be in your plans to look to see if that would be another place during peak time that you might want to eliminate a left or...
The southbound movement will have a left-turn lane which will allow you to at least get those vehicles out.
The southbound on Birmingham Highway will.
Yep. So if you're coming south on Birmingham and want to make a left on Mayfield, yes, we're going to try, we'll try and work in a left-turn lane there.
And I guess I'm just suggesting that if that left turn lane, because I don't know if that's going to take the four years, or if it's the conclusion of all of it that would be four, is that maybe in the interim, there's a way to at least manage it until you get that...
Oh, that's right, right. I see what you're saying.
Is so that you at least manage it while that's in process.
And we'll certainly look at those operational issues as we move through this and anything that we can do. There's a very heavy left turn, then immediate right turn onto Mid-Broadwell in the morning. One of the things that we've talked about with eliminating that left-hand turn is, you know, where are we pushing that traffic?
Do you push it further down Broadwell?
The westbound on Mayfield, eliminating that left-hand turn, there's another alternative very close to that, so that makes that kind of attractive to do, and we just have to look at what would those left-turn movements do, because it is a high left-hand turn movement count in the morning.
Right, and I think in particular, because in this next year, you're going to see more traffic obviously coming from a different direction than what it has been, so even as we look at this four-year plan, operationally, anything we can do in the short term would be great.
And I've got a cost...
What would that be?
For environmental impact study?
For this, for this leg? The full environmental study, the price that we've gotten so far is $275,000.
For all of them, one through six?
Well, we'd have to see, you know, we didn't really anticipate that, so we'd have to see what that impact, but that would be, want to add two?
Please.
Just number two? But number one probably wouldn't be a significant addition to that. It was originally scoped as just for number two, but I don't, you know, you're not talking about a double by adding number one. It would be significantly less because it would be a categorical exclusion versus a full environmental document for that number-one bypass.
And those would all be locally funded, is that correct?
These are federally funded.
But if we expanded it and went...
Well...
We might not need to...
Right, that's right. If we wanted to do it locally, we could, that would change completely.
But I will say, that's a nice lever point when you look at the 706 versus 3.5. It's a good use of citizen tax pay dollars.
And as we move through the process, we'll be, we'll begin to develop some cost estimates for those other legs so that we can really have a good idea if there are projects that we think we might be able to tackle on a local level versus trying to go after federal funds for these other projects.
Is it correct that the DOT is funding 100% of roundabouts on state roads, but not the acquisition of the right-of-way, or it just depends on each individual project?
Well, I think using those 100% funds, I think it does include acquisition of right-of-way. We've looked at those, or we've tried to look at that on the 372 project, and we're continuing to do that. Our original issue was the availability of those funds and the potential for delaying that particular project. So when we looked at that originally, we kind of put that off so as not to delay that project any further, but we are continuing to look at that as an alternative.
100% just sounds so nice.
It's perfect.
It does, it just takes forever.
Right, I mean, forever's also not acceptable.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
What do you need from us?
Nothing on this one. This was just an update to give you an idea about where we were heading on this particular project.
Can't we say amen or something?
Well, maybe, maybe the fact that the northwest bypass was one that we really wanted to pursue, that you all felt that that was of some value to pursue.
Amen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Frick.
Mr. Frick, thank you for all your work.